Today is August 12th, 2013. I'd like to call the meeting in your order. What's your leadership?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clearing.
Here.
Aaron, yes. Myers, here. Rose.
Here.
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 Is there any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes of the previous meeting? If not, anybody would like to make a motion?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, maybe?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron, yes. Myers, yes.
That's me.
Coleman.
Yes.
Waylon.
Yes.
Questions, sir?
All board members have a copy of the treasurer's report. Total tax income received since the last board meeting, $142,682.53. Also attached to the treasurer's report is a proclamation declaring September 19th, 2013, as drive for pledges day on Village Feature. The proclamation relates to texting and driving and the dangers of those. Is there any objections to the proclamation or questions?
We're being asked to do that from the Illinois Minister for Labor. Recognition of audience, DePeroni. DePeroni was asked to be put on the agenda tonight. And since there's no woman in the office, then the audience have a concern that DePeroni's not here. Is there any else, anybody else from the audience who'd like to address the board? Sir, please state your name and your address.
William Walser, 140th and Bald Eagle Lane in the Preserve. He actually comes to the village to try to find out where we need to go, to find out if we have any funding for completing like playground in our subdivision. Because as of now, it seems like our association manager isn't aware of any expenses or any totals that are balances. She has no idea, you know, what's available, part of the funding. So I figured I'd come to the village meeting, try to find out, you know, where we're at with that and what we can do to maybe expedite something. We know there were some expenses spent on the road, which was kind of puzzling to a lot of the homeowners, since it seems to be a public road. And we were told, and this is all hearsay and rumors, because it doesn't seem like we had any explanation, whether we're right, so getting explanations of the expenses.
Are you referring to the reserves of Cardinal Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me give you some history. About two years ago now, I presume it was your board and other members that belonged to that association came to us and asked and talked and spoke to us about gazebo, park equipment, and other things that they would like to be done in that particular subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
At that particular point in time, we explained that only the escrow money that we had on account could only be used for certain things.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was a detailed discussion of what we can or cannot do.
Mm-hmm.
At that particular point in time, though, the individuals that were in the audience, and I don't know if it's the same board or not, in terms of different board, they didn't realize that the items that would be built or could be built, like the gazebo or the park equipment, would have to be maintained by the association.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was some discussion amongst themselves.
Mm-hmm.
At that particular point in time, it was left up to them to go back, go over their list, establish a prior, a bunch of priorities of what they would like on that list, most important to least important, and also then investigate what they would do for insurance and maintenance of the equipment that whoever could build down the road, because it would be on common property.
Mm-hmm.
At that particular point in time, it was left up to them to get back to us. They never did. Approximately a year ago, a letter was written, I believe on the same behalf of that association, by an attorney, and was asking the same questions. And once he had the village attorney got involved, they explained the same thing over again. And again, it was still back on the association to get back to us, to tell us what they want to get, what order, and then we can make a decision of what we clearly would not do.
Okay.
So at that particular point in time, it's still in our, on the other way, it's still backing your association to get back to us, and they've never done that.
Okay, so you're recommending that our association board gets in contact with you and supplies you with insurance documents?
It's not insurance documents. It's basically come up with a plan.
Okay.
If they had a list of things that they wanted to build and wanted to finish and complete and so on and so forth.
Okay.
And the village board is willing to listen, but once again, is, we're being informed by our attorney that we can only use that money for certain things.
Mm-hmm.
And also, we have a checklist of things that have to be completed as well. And that list, one of which, the most, the largest expenditure was what we just fixed on Cardinal Creek Boulevard with the bridge. But there's sidewalks, from what I understand, that has to be finished?
Yeah. We found out that there's common property out there that needs sidewalks connecting the intersections. Also, there's going to be gaps in the sidewalk. So we have to reserve money for that. We haven't backed up the basements yet, which is something that we have to do. And we have to also get asphalt drawn into our board and superacquiesces while we have the groundwork. Okay. Now, there's, I looked here, we have 131,000 left in the account. And I don't know how much of that will be finished. I don't know. I think at that time, we talked to them about 50 to 75,000 might be available when we all get done.
Well, I've done a little research on playground equipment, and basically, the whole project would be about 30,000 to put up a decent, you know, something comparable to other subdivisions in Future.
And I assume they have liability coverage for that.
We do have that. That already with our pool is covering that.
So you get a rider for the playground. And they were going to investigate all that. Another thing they wanted, which I think might be a lost cause now, was the irrigation system refired up. But apparently, the guy that they paid by the developer, he pulled all this stuff out of there. There were pumps, there were-
Right, that's-
-piping and everything else. And that might be too cost prohibitive now to reinstitute that.
So what's the next step involved?
Are you on the board?
No.
Why don't you give me a copy of that letter from the attorney?
Do you know who John Byrne is?
One of the, one of the members.
That's the attorney.
This should be the attorney.
Okay.
If you'd like, you can take this letter, which basically gives you the timeline of how everything occurred.
Yeah, if possible.
You can take this, take this back to your board, but once again, I think it's the consensus of the board, at least I hope it is, basically, we're waiting to hear back from you, and we haven't heard from you.
Oh, really? Okay.
You know, over what, two years' time, I think?
Okay.
So if you'd like to take this with you, and then by all means, if you want, you can call, go to all of the-
Yeah, I'm just trying to take, take a little responsibility and get something going. That's why I-
And, and thank you for doing that.
And other neighbors are, you know, saying, saying the same thing. Obviously, it's been kind of left undone. Okay, so, so what you're saying is, the next step would be what?
Why don't you have a meeting in your mind, board, and maybe the rest of your residents that own the association?
Go ahead.
Decide what you think you would like.
Go ahead.
Compile this and prioritize it, and then get it back to us, and with a plan of making sure that who's going to maintain it and who's going to, you know, cover it on insurance and so forth.
And that would be at a village meeting as well, then?
You could probably bring it to the board hall.
Doing it not in a meeting setting, you can go through it, and then we're happy with it when we present it to the board. That'd probably be the right thing.
So get a hold of yourself?
Village Hall, yeah. Meeting's fine.
Okay.
Okay. The one thing we didn't explain is, why was the road worked out?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The bridge was not accepted by the village. It was still under the responsibility of that developer. And that's what the, and that's what the money was there for, was anything that they failed to do that was under the responsibility of the developer, the bridge was never certified as state of the art.
There wasn't?
Which we thought it was. We came to the awareness it wasn't. The, the bridge, if you notice, had a dip in it. Now it's flat. That dip is part of the erosion of the bridge. So we had to have an engineer go in, look at what damage was to it, and modify that bridge support to make sure that stayed covered. Then they certified it with state. None of that was done by the developer.
There wasn't?
So part of that money goes to get this to where it needs to meet the development agreement. That's why that money is held inside his escrow.
No, I understood that one.
And, and the escrow is not what he has agreed to give you as, as a homeowner?
No.
Primarily, he's meeting the village's requirements of the developer.
Okay.
And the reason that if the board's going to use that money outside of what is required that the developer does to meet the village's requirements, that's the board's decision and direction? It's not a requirement to do with that money? Just so you're better aware.
No, we're, we're kind of aware of that, that it was to complete a subdivision, and that money's held aside for those things, I, that I understand. But as far as you're talking about the road and erosion, it was never inspected, it wasn't built properly, or you're, or wasn't approved. But as far as the size of equipment that's, that goes down that road, is that another issue that the village should be concerned about?
Like what equipment are you referring to?
We're talking farm equipment, heavy farm equipment that travels down that road. Now, is that-
Farm equipment is sort of, they have got permission to do that. I guess you could say that, I can say this way, though. There's nothing I don't think, well, I'll take one with the least you can.
Yeah, implements of husbandry and farming equipment are exempt from all your size width and weight regulations, as long as they're coming from the field.
That was a question that came up, because it seems like, you know, twice a piece of equipment do go down that road, and that does cause a lot of havoc on roads and so forth.
And a lot of the equipment is not overweight. I mean, the road, the roads are all weighted for 80,000. Combine coming down that road is not 80,000.
Okay, yeah, let's see. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. If you have any more questions, just like I said, you could stop in the village hall and more than have to answer questions.
Okay, well, and thank you for the update on that, because I went to our, our meetings, and, you know, we go to these meetings and, you know, as homeowners, and we're requesting and asking, you know, what can we do about this and that? And the management company kind of, it sounded like dropped the ball and just kind of left it, you know, dangling as far as, you know, requesting any more, you know, like the equipment, like I said, and the gazebo and so forth, that we talked about it one time.
Is the HOA under your, your group's management, or is it still under a different management?
No, I believe it's under ours. I believe.
It's unique. The architecture is reserved with the new owner of all the big lots. I don't believe he's financially supporting the HOA.
No.
Is that right?
Yeah, he's, he's been kind of stubborn about being, paying any of his dues or any of that, and just kind of, you know, concerned about his own, own lots and doing a partial job, probably down the, the grass. You know, he's been difficult about doing that, and-
Know that very well.
Yeah, and I can probably hear it.
Well, people complain that I gotta get on him to do it, that he refers it to his builders, partner, and it's been nothing but a nightmare out here as far as getting the leads coming.
All right, well, I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Questions, sir? Reports of the commission, specification commission.
We had a meeting last week, and we have elected new officers. We're also going to start holding our meetings on the second Tuesday of each month at the village hall, which will be posted in the newspaper, based whatever we'd like to attend, and we're now preparing for a home walk.
Fourth of July commission.
Yeah, of course, my celebration this year was probably the most successful one we've ever had, probably due to the weather and all things that kind of just came together, worked out nice. Probably, oh, I don't know, not accurate, but probably 25,000 ahead of last year. And very successful. The Kyle was successful. Many of the things that we did in the park were also successful. But I think, excuse me, the biggest thing was the good weather, you know? We had four days of good weather, and everything worked out fine. Next meeting of the Fourth of July commission is on September 11th at 6:30.
Any others?
That's it.
The youth commission, first.
Youth commission, we did, um, last Friday, apparently got the water park in, a piece of weather. This coming Saturday, 17th, we had moving of the park. What's the other?
For the population, questions, sir?
Yeah, what we're doing now is we're coming up with a letter and possibly a brochure to send out corporate sponsors for, for getting donations and so forth. We have received a few small donations that would increase our balance, but it's not enough at this point. So we're going to really be pushing for donations to get this off the ground. Everybody has seen our newspaper ads in, in the newspaper, you know, showing the groundbreaking and everything else. Biggest thing is donations at this point. So that's kind of what we're working on, going the corporate side and also going to the individuals. That's all I have.
Nothing else? Finance administration, anything?
Yep.
I'll stand here after receiving a camera etiquette from the chief.
One key thing is your treasurer's reports are separate documents.
They're separate documents.
Not in the board pack. It's a separate document at your, at your location.
Yes, they are. Like we've got them. The top sheet is once again our comparison of balances from the previous month. It hasn't been a lot of times since last board meeting, but what we're showing is a $26,000 decline. I think it's a couple more specialized things. We have three payrolls in July, which, which add to the expense in general. We also did a GL bond payment that had come due in July, and we paid an interest-only payment. We have our interest payment in January, about a two-time-a-year occur. So it pretty much accounts for our, our, our change in the balances. Moving on, you've got the commission and special committee accounts, and all of the bills paid there. Once again, I think the primary expenditures really are on payroll. You can look at various categories of what was, what was expended. And special to this report would be the Fourth of July activity. As you all know, July was, was a big month for all of the expenditures and all the checks. And of course, the income side is on this, but this is where all of your handwritten checks and all your expenses were primarily taken care of. It's reflected in this right here. Other than that, I just wanted to note, you see the ribbon of Hope account is now listed under the village's accounts under their committees. But they've got one of your group, we're making a nice smooth transition there that had started in one place and is moving out to the village. Your, your group there has been very, very good so far in helping to take a smooth transition. So really, it's not a whole lot to report at this moment. Do you guys have any questions?
Can we keep track any more of like going permits and, and any fees or anything that are-
Yeah, my understanding is that you've been settled up with what you're talking about back to your partners on that aspect of it.
No, he's talking about Nelson's big problem.
Yeah, there's how many going permits we have and, and-
This district, a million, three?
Three? Seems like there's more.
Three paid. When you're looking at building permits, Scott, if you're looking at housing permits or building permits-
We're talking about new housing starts. New housing starts.
Total housing starts?
They don't have that many.
Paid housing starts would be three, but NPM has ways, so they don't pay. So it's just total. Six probably.
You addressed that, your pledges.
Yeah, he's probably asking, because in his strategic plan questionnaire, there's a question, how many thousands are completed within five years?
Right.
And we're pretty close to what we guessed. It's amazing. I think it'd be zero, but there are 60, 70, 800,000.
Hopefully, it'll start to, start to cope from here. Any other questions on the treasurer's? Make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the financial activity for the month of July.
Is the motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Myers? Yes. Clearing.
Yes. Various reports also for the month of June are in here. How should they not be for July?
No, these are June's. Because there's no big bills for July. These were the one that you paid your bills last month.
And the bills are also provided to us under email and also at our tables. We have a debate. Is any questions?
There were no additions since then.
If there's no questions, I make a motion approving the bills. A total of $82,992.15.
Second. The motion on the floor, and a second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron, yes. Myers, yes. Rose?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
There was a change in staff at the village halls. We're, we're now looking to get a utility billing technician and administrative assistant position is now open at the village hall. There's one item in your write-up, Bob, that I'm not too sure about, where you're saying that the issue could be a future issue for the code enforcement under these duties.
We're going to discuss a code enforcement option in the whole session if the village president's request that, or it is a proposal for-
How is that going to affect public safety planning, building and zoning, as it involves these departments?
What the mayor wanted to discuss, they have to hand it to you, which we first asked you to can.
Okay. So right now, the, the village has initiated a description of the position. It's been in the Future Herald, and they're there to look for candidates. We're looking to have a meeting that way.
We are looking at the, 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 the application process closes on August 19th. We will select probably six out of that pile. We will do those six individuals on Wednesday, the 28th, starting at about 6:00 PM, and we'll be one-six in a row. There will also be the assessment center drill, the individual condition, involves using spreadsheets, capital, you're just typing the letter, as if that may-
August 28th, you're going to do that?
Yes. And when it started at 6:00, and both of them were done, so it was probably a long night.
Title two, the village code, replacing commission treasurers for, with the village treasurer. Initially, we thought this would be a very easy fix, two more complications than we expected. Do we have a draft of the final revision on that yet?
I think so. You know?
Struggling with that one.
Reddick, I'm going to sit down with Nelson and can't, who can? And what hopefully will be achieved.
Okay. So we're trying to get that cleaned up. Hopefully, we'll have it. That ends my report.
Thank you. Public buildings and properties, parks and recreation, trustee Will.
Light and park campaign, the committee will be meeting this coming month. And we have several meetings we have to do, so we'll have more info on that. We need to raise money. It looks like it's going to take some time to replace the lights and firemen's one. So we need to do that. Hopefully, the old lights can nick it another year or so. It's going to take some time. I think we're up around, what was the figure, up around 90, 100,000?
About 90,000.
Somewhere in there. Okay, so that's going to take some time to raise. So we're going to be on the campaign to light the park.
Scott, have you talked to corporate sponsors on camera?
Have not, no.
Those usually areas that they go after.
Yeah.
They want to think about that.
Big, big corporate sponsors, a lot of times they'll go for scoreboards, and they'll go for fencing, they'll go for-
As long as they get their name on it, some of them will be able to back through the lighting.
Right.
You might want to keep in context.
All right. Rules for the special events in the public parks, that's again, a meeting we're going to set in the coming month. I know we've been trying to set our meetings, and we haven't been able to get together. So that's coming up in the next month as well. So I'll have more to report next month.
Just on that number two, Scott, someone came in and asked me, boy, if I just had a van on the stage to start playing, and you taught me I was a person of the right, and absent any type of permit or ordinance, I don't know if we could stop. Because we don't have a formal ordinance that says you need a permit to play or use application in the park.
But you wouldn't be able to be on, on the main stage without having that portion of the permit approved. If you're just taking the park over, it's like going into, into the building and using the hooking area. You, you need to be allowed into that area. Now, if that doesn't stop them from, from saying they're going to use the firemen's park, and then setting up a stage on the field, that they would not be allowed to use the, the main stage.
And also the power, you know, the electric.
Yeah, I think it was the question with amplification, right? Yeah. You should have a permit for sound application systems. And then the other hypothetical situation, which I think you just said, is what if somebody took a generator or stans, put it out in the middle of firemen's one and start playing?
Yep.
So that, that could have happened with an inquiry that we had, obviously it didn't. But by my, is I think that's what he wants to, trustee Will wants to do in the future to discuss.
Well, you know, just like anything else, we have a strict rule as far as the park, as far as renting the, the stage, the bingo, and, you know, even, our lease commission has to, you know, put a date in, in reserve, you know, so other people are going to have to do the same thing.
But it wouldn't stop anybody from getting your, if you're, if I'm not going to pay to use the, the main stage, it doesn't stop them from developing their own stage on those grounds. My concern is they're building something on the grounds with nobody inspecting to verify that it's constructed correctly. So anybody on that stage is at risk of injury on village property. That really is the bigger problem. Not that they're on the stage and using it, it's that, one, they're, they have a ban that's been not known by the village, which could directly impact the residents that surround the park. And two, they can build a, literally build a stage and do the same thing, and now you've got the noise and the risks of people on that stage that could get in. So we need to tighten it up in a little more. Reddick, we haven't gone through this, but we need to start looking forward.
Right. And I scope with this in, but hopefully it was taken care of at that point.
It was, yeah, it was, it started the wheels.
Okay, all right.
That ends my report. Building Department, I'm sorry. I'm Building and Zoning trustee.
The building department, on the report, code enforcement report, we're opposed for your review due to a change in employment. Bob Barber's now handling the lead in property maintenance, and Jeff, the skyscraper's handling contractors license RVs, trailers, in driveways and abandoned vehicles. Dollar General has added six panels, a glass to the front of their facade, and also brick bump ups on that facade also. This was also discussed in our last meeting. They agreed also to put tonne shrubs in the corners of the building. I went out and took some pictures of a new Bailey Dollar building in University Park that I also sent to board members for review in the PCC. Unfortunately, the Dollar General is retrofitting an existing building which has a long side facing the street, and Dollars, the Dollar Store Company apparently has their own corporate designs for their buildings. I thought they were very nice looking, but-
Yeah, yeah, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
They didn't add a total of six panels, right? They added two additional panels to their four. I think they went one on each side of the, what they had.
Six pan total.
Six pan's total.
Or for the doors, it's one on the side.
Yeah. Because if this, it would have not, you know, they would have added-
No.
Yeah, well, that, you're, you're re- 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 re-
Radio, telephone, your eyesight from looking at the weather going bad or so on and so forth. That's gonna give you the time as you you know ahead of time. The sirens actually made it, in my opinion, to supplement that. But again, the way we're doing it is very early column. It's not that unusual to have a failure like that either. You could be sitting right up against a pole. If someone is on the same frequency of that siren app as the key of that radio at the same time, it'll knock that signal off from that pole.
The only problem is the one that went through Missouri. It was nighttime and leveled that down.
Correct.
So I guess people have grown to depend on those signals to tell them.
Well, they're working on a new feature now in Verizon has instituted it. All cell phones will activate in a warm area.
If you have them set up.
Mine's not, it went off. I was surprised.
Yeah.
Verizon overrode the system and shot every tower in a warm area. Tornado approached. Tornado, I was surprised. Cause I usually don't, I don't mind a phone on silent, it wasn't silent, it went off. So they're they're working on new technology and that's probably better than these sirens or anything else. What if a tornado is going through? And that's another thing, when the power goes out, there's a battery backup that runs those sirens. Okay? We don't test the sirens under battery backup mode, but they're checked once a year. We keep the maintenance service agreement on those, make sure the battery backup works. There's also battery backup on the sirens. Will they work under battery conditions? I hope that you think I have a big sensitivity to those. Except for the one with PD, the one with PD doesn't have a battery.
Any else? Public Works, may I trust you, Paul?
Brian, I'm sorry, I thought I was your question.
Yeah, no, no, uh, school security continues. Uh, any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
Alright, uh, Public Works, uh, water and sewer department, all the reports are in full review. Virial speed drives, uh, installation progress report, there's nothing to report. Uh, valt turning data, nothing to report also. Uh, status of order in the mini dump, what?
I met with Floyd, um, was sitting down with Bob Thursday.
Sitting down Thursday?
Yes.
Alright. And the status of trees in the village encloses a list of trees in town which need a division west of Dixie and south of Country Lane. Um, once we get this done, work done, we will create a list for the north and east sides of town. Uh, superintendent wants to make the board aware of the status of the ash and maple trees in town which are suffering from ashwater infestation and maple scourge. Buddy, you wanna touch on that at all?
The younger trees, I mean, you you can tell they're just dead in a lot of the subdivisions. A lot more than, um, really thought of at first. The older ones, I'm not in a big, big hurry to take them down because they still got a bunch of leaves on them. But you need to be aware that it is a problem and you're gonna start losing trees. Um, the maple scourge, you know, kinda same thing. It's more like the younger trees that, you know, are, um, they're blistering out, kinda exploding. You'll you'll drive by, you'll see them, you'll see like almost a, uh, a festering of it is what they call it. And it'll, um, you know, it's killing the trees. So those are also gonna have to be replaced. Um, the other thing is too, now, it's, it, there's a big issue out there. When we tried to go around at one point in time, there, the trees in the subdivisions, you know, um, they've been neglected. You know, people, I understand that they paid for them, but in my department, um, they need to be lifted, okay? And and by say that, when they walk by, you see these trees, you drive them about two feet from the ground. I mean, they got branches coming off of it. And for those trees to mature and grow the proper way, they, the branches need to be cut off at a decent level. To save the tree and also to prevent the tree from overgrowing out into the street and also into the park, um, you know, preventing people from the ability of walking. Our problem is a lot of the residents are, you know, there, there are, I won't say a lot, but there's a few of them that have a big issue with us trimming the trees. Now, eh, we're not gonna be able to make everybody happy, but I know in my department, they're very hesitant about doing that cause we were, you know, like in Hunter's Chase a couple of years ago, we were told to stand down. Well, now it's become a hassle where they got garbage trucks and people complaining when they're driving by that their trucks are getting, you know, beat up or they can't walk on a sidewalk. But if I go over there with a chainsaw, you know, they get chased off the property and yell that that they're their trees. Well, they're really not their trees, they're the village's trees. It was a requirement for them to put the trees in when they bought the house. Now, if they wanna trade, you know, then if it's its way, then when the trees die, it should be their responsibility to take care of them too and replace them. So I, you know, I'm kind of at a laugher head when I, with what to tell, you know, the employees of the village when they, you know, send them over there to trim the tree up and then they get, you know, shouted out.
Well, that was, I was gonna address that. That's something I, I think, um, we need to inform the residents, um, before we do do that. I think it might be good to, um, put it in the fall village newsletter, which I'm sure we got coming up here soon. So we are doing them by any way correct? Um, you know, just informing residents that trees in the parkway are a property of the village. We will be doing what we need to do to maintain those trees and take care of them. Um, I I see it throughout the new subdivisions. I know what you're talking about, Buddy, where the suckers are growing out of control out of the bottoms of them. Um, and just branches hanging all, you know, all over the sidewalks and stuff like that. And it does, that is something that needs to be addressed. But I think before we go in there with a chainsaw, I think it it probably would be best to get something together which I'd be happy to, uh, maybe, I'm sure, to work on that.
We also shouldn't stop them from maintaining the trees. If anybody's gonna see the trees quicker than we are, they are. Now, that doesn't stop us from getting residents that aren't gonna try to maintain them. And I agree, there's, I've seen even in my subdivision where one tree is phenomenal on the same piece of property, the other one's got suckers all the way up and down. Almost looks like a bush. And someone came in and finally cleaned that tree off and the residents, wow, this is great. And we must have done it. It had been there for such a long time that they're like, wow, this is excellent, the tree looks great. And it does, it really improved the quality of the tree. But I agree with Jonathan, we almost need to educate them why we're doing this. And yeah, they are still village's trees. We're not gonna stop them from doing what they need to do to the trees. We're just gonna maintain so we have proper access, that the roadway is still clear and usable and so on the sidewalks. I wouldn't wanna ever stop a resident from maintaining the trees. If they're there, they're gonna wanna have that thing really grow and improve the property. And they need to understand that after all.
Yeah, they're not, they're not trimming the trees up, I mean, so.
Someone's gonna need it.
Some people just don't have that green thumb.
Yeah. Either they are gonna maintain them or we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna work them out.
Well, that's the thing, Brian, they need, like you said, you know what, we've kind of stood there for a couple of years here now. They need attention.
Well, that's fine, we'll, and we can address that. I think the best way to do that is through the fall newsletter, get the word out.
When are you planning on trimming these trees? Will you be trimming them before?
I, eh, I mean, we've already started in the, in, on the west side of town with, you know, trimming trees and dropping trees and stuff. The west side isn't as bad, but I, I, I can tell you the newer subdivisions, they'll come out with baseball.
Right. How many, how many, uh, in, in certain subdivisions that we are, quantity of trees we're talking about?
Oh, gosh, Brian, you could, you know, you could go, you could hit four of them down to your block, I know. I mean, uh.
Either that, or, either that or we come up with a, a letter. And we go, explain.
And as you, as you, you know, if you gotta go to a house and do it, you you post that, that notice on their door. Explaining to them what you're doing and why you're doing it. And it's real simple.
That'd be the easiest thing to do.
Eh, any house that you do have to maintain or you have to do something to that tree, you go and you post that on their door.
Prior to doing any work?
Prior to doing the work and you go to do the work on a tree. Either that or you go and you identify the ones and you post it forty-eight hours in advance before you do the work. So they have time and if they have questions, they can contact you and ask you the questions. I know, across the street from your house, we did that. The lady was out there, told her we're gonna do it, she told me to get off her property and started calling me all sorts of wonderful names.
Well, that tree needed to be worked on. I always have attempted to get my own trimmer over there.
Well, yeah, I wish you would've. I took it back, I told her, go talk to you.
Alright.
So we'll, we'll work on that, Buddy, we'll, we'll work on some sort of notice letter that you can polish forty-eight hours.
That's fine, that's all I've, you know, I think.
Forty-eight hours, forty hours should give you enough where you can at least plan the work, get that out there then.
I think Floyd and those guys just wanted to make sure that they had the support of the village board and we were all on the same page when it came. So they, somebody came up to you and asked you what, you know, what do you guys think you're doing? You would have an answer for it.
Well, we just need to make sure we're, as Jonathan's indicated, and I totally agree, that we've informed the residents why we're doing it. And it could be a shock to them that it is their tree, they paid for it. And now they're worried that you're just, you're gonna destroy it. They need to understand why we're doing it also. And it's just awareness, it doesn't mean we're doing anything wrong. You're right, those are our trees, we can do whatever we want. But they also paid for them, they're on their property. We're trying to do the right thing for the resident and the village at the same time. They just need to understand it. And I'll work with Jonathan, we'll try to get that really done.
That concludes my report.
The county development community relations committee.
That's good segue with my question. We did have our first meeting, it was a lengthy three-hour meeting. Uh, we discussed a lot of topics, including updating the website, having a Facebook page, GIS-based robocalling, north and south area annexation plans, the future of all downtown, use of economic incentives, a meeting with village businesses. Um, when it came to the annexation plans or future of downtown economic incentives, we figured there's not a lot of things we could decide about at that point in time until we go through the strategic planning process and we get all the surveys back from the other trustees. Um, the other parts, but updating the website, now we're running into a little bit of personnel problem at village hall. We have to get some bodies in there to be able to do that. Um, I would like to do a Facebook page. The questions we have that we have to look into are how that works with Freedom of Information Act. People post things, um, what the legalities, legalities are that are involved. So that's something we're gonna research. GIS-based robocalling, um, we talked about, there's a lot of different options where you can have an outside company do it. Um, you can take care of it yourself, uh, there's a lot of different services that we're gonna look into, see what would work. But if there's emergencies or something like this where you're gonna do tree trimming in a certain area, you could send out calling to that particular area to let people know you're gonna do it. If there's an emergency, um, if there's a water main break, these are things where you can target certain areas of town or the whole town. And people can opt in and get phone messages as to what's going on.
School does it all the time.
Yep.
Yeah, one time, the high school kids.
We get three hydro washing, there's, there's a lot of.
They had, they had everybody, my wife's phone, my phone and the home phone.
All three go off the same time.
The only thing you need is, you need a phone number, right?
Right.
I mean, you gotta start with something.
Well, it doesn't, but it doesn't need to be a landline, it could be a cell.
Right. But I'm just saying, you know, for the schools and everything else, they, they register, they get their phone numbers with, with the village, I mean, you gotta.
Yeah, the challenge will be publicizing the program.
Well, apparently the service is pretty much on record and worked with these. They have access to all the phone numbers and billing addresses. So if your two-five-nine number gets billed to your house, that phone will go off.
They, they grab it, the initial startup is grabbed from a certain database that they have access to. And then from that on, either you register, you opt in, you opt out. Several different things you can do for the whole program. But you do have a starting source.
The prob, the problem is, and what Bob's saying is right, it goes to the billing address. But if you're, if you're in a, on a cell service where you have friends and family, where you have multiple cells on that, it goes to the primary person's number is the registered address.
Right.
So for my mother-in-law, her registered address is in Beecher, but she's under my sister-in-law's phone, which is out of Michigan. So would you try to bank her cell, it won't come up. It would be a Michigan call that would bank her cell along. So it doesn't really, it doesn't work perfectly unless she opts in and provides that information.
I was gonna say, if they opt in under some of those circumstances, they can still get the, the messages. But those are things we're looking at. Um, we're going to have our second meeting August twenty-sixth. And like I says, we have to wait for the strategic planning process before we can get too much further into most of these topics. Uh, we're meeting with Southland Division of the Minister's Bureau, August Friday, August twenty-third at nine AM at village hall. That's all I have.
Very good first, very good first.
My report, uh, I remember right reported the last meeting that the Low County received a grant to do corridor study along the Olean Expressway. Uh, they've offered to give us thirty thousand dollars and we opted in at six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars as a local match. So basically, we're going to pay six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of the local match, get the return thirty thousand dollars. We're gonna use that money to update our master plan in the future to include the Olean Expressway. Uh, and that I would need any resolution. And anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion made, was there a second?
Second.
Any questions to the motion?
I have a question. What happens if we don't opt into this resolution? I mean, they're, they're, they're saying we provide sixty-two fifty and we get thirty back. What happens if we do nothing?
Then basically, someone else is going to decide what you're gonna have, half of the Olean or somebody else is gonna be here talking for you, for you. We won't be part of any of these meetings in the future. And the idea is it's a, it's a regional thing, but basically, we're all gonna cooperate with each other with the Low County along the way. If we don't opt in, then we're not gonna be in that part of it.
The, the whole story, Brian, is the county got a half a million dollars from the state. In order to get that half a million, they have to come up with a local match. So the county said willing fifty and the communities on the quarter, most of the other fifty, I think it was, wasn't it fifty? So we're gonna, so. So we split amongst the communities on the quarter, give out the sixty-two fifty apiece. So each community's got to pass this resolution for our five percent share of that match. The county will pay its five, or yeah, its half of the ten. We're coming up with only, it's five communities, so we're only paying one percent, county's paying five and that adds up to ten.
And what I'm wondering is, okay, what happens if one community and that whole block does nothing? They don't even opt in.
I think all of them express.
They're all, they're all in, but at first, any time you present anything, the village board, something, you may not pass, but we don't think that's gonna happen.
The shakiest one was Wellington because they're not happy with the air change. But believe it or not, they support the Olean concept, they're just happy with the air change. So that was the only question for us from the hand of Peter Tone. Uh, they shall pass. This only goes from the state line now to.
County line.
Yeah, well, from Indiana state line to, to fifty-five. We do not know what's going on in Indiana state. They, they, they're gonna have their own.
Is this, the money's coming from the state?
Yes.
How far south is it?
We can't find it, we'll contact. Should I spell? It's eight thousand bucks.
It's that that it's already started there.
Everybody, we have our stoplight.
It's federal, it's federal money that the state has control. It's really not state money, it's federal money that the state controls.
State money has a situation like that where they were controlling some federal money for us.
And it was, well, traffic light, I believe, was federal money that the state was controlling. We had to pay our match and we had to pay and we were still waiting. No, we waited, we paid, it's paid. Yeah, that's all I was wondering.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Well, today we attended a meeting, actually, at the Olean corridor. And if you haven't heard or saw the, uh, newspaper article, CMAP, Chicago Metrofile Area Planning Company. Uh, it came out or is going to come out with a letter, uh, not supporting the Olean Expressway. Uh, what the Low County government has asked us to do is to write a letter in support from the Olean Expressway. Uh, so it would be given and put on record with CMAP, trying to encourage them to promote the program rather than not to pro, than rather than, uh, bash the program for lack of better terms. CMAP apparently is the agency that controls the federal money for the project.
Yes, not for the phase one and two, but for the actual land yet.
What does CMAP have a problem?
They think that it's in the interlands that, see, originally, the CMAP board approved the A-three S-two corridor. Okay, there, there was letters for, when they picked the B-three corridor. Now, CMAP's opinion is road's not needed. The data doesn't justify this deal.
Yeah, I got a question.
Exactly what we're discussing.
Is there somebody in town or in the list that's involved with CMAP?
Oh, yeah, buddy, that's, oh, no, 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 he's not part of CMAP, John. There's another person who is involved with CMAP that could be directly impacted by the relocation of that road.
By the way, is, yes, a lot of that discussion was taking place today. And they think, uh, again, Low County government is asking that we write this letter of support, uh, basically just supporting the concept.
And attaching our old resolution.
And our old resolution, which we passed in, like, here.
No, it was one in ten, it was one in eleven, it was one in twelve.
On record.
And we need a, a motion.
There's a, a resolution?
No, there isn't, eh, for the letter of support, we need a letter of motion for that.
I guess you need to say.
Yes.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, South suburban airport, which has also taken up a lot of our time within the last couple of weeks. Basically, we've sent a bill, twenty that was passed, which, eh, which basically says that IDOT is going to run the airport, uh, way back in two thousand eight, uh, the development district. There was legislation that we tried to pass by the, uh, five committees surrounding the airport for a development district. And it made it through the House, and then it did not go any further. Since the signed bill actually is identifying IDOT as the actual person to run the airport, the development district has to be, the legislation has to be tweaked, which we've been, or actually, the village managers have been doing that, uh, for quite some time and then the mayors have recently left, uh, met recently. Um, we did have a meeting scheduled with Ann Schneider, the director of IDOT, the Secretary of Transportation for IDOT concerning the airport. She had the handle, she took it, we have now had that meeting rescheduled for August twenty-first, in which time we'll sit down and we'll discuss these options with her. The next inner governmental meeting will be August twenty-ninth at seven PM and the, uh, agenda is included in our packet for your review.
Can I, can I go back to number two again? I apologize, that effectively, somebody was not in the board packet. And that's because in our last meeting, there was possibly some changes that were gonna occur. And I pulled it and I'm gonna have to put the, the new one back in, cause all these means are current at the last minute. Um, the development district legislation, as we read it, is in conflict with the new SB twenty. And that's gonna be a big problem for us to generate sufficient revenue out of that district. So I don't know what's gonna happen. So they're not allowing us to tax at all on airport property. I mean, fees, liveries.
Yeah, but the development district is the property outside of the airport.
Yes, we were going to, under the old arrangement, we were going to be able to have a hotel tax and a cab fare tax to help fund the district.
But the airport could be on the front end.
And according to SB twenty, all fees, taxes, everything for exempt on airport property.
Maybe to sum that one up, matter of fact, Senate Bill twenty didn't go into a lot of detail and a lot of things. And the village managers and the mayors got together and basically went through with it with, uh, several representatives, very representative, and identified those concerns that we have, that there's a lot of vagueness in that Senate bill. And we hope to get that taken care of in the future.
So they can, the, the state can't allow a whole town to be built inside that facility?
Right now, the way we word it, they have control of the ultimate airport footprint, which is twenty-three thousand acres.
And that's even up for debate whether they be the.
They could build anything they wanted, yeah.
The voucher, like, they're even up in debate.
If it was supposed to be, nothing was supposed to be built inside the buffer zone other than the airport.
Same concern we had with the Jackson proposal was what kind of weather business did you put on the property?
That's what Susan Shay proposed and went over in detail in the, in the future high school. When people were asking them what was going inside there and why they needed so much room. And IDOT stated, it's a buffer zone, there will be no building inside that zone.
That's not guaranteed.
And basically, we're back to square one with what was just recently passed with IDOT. And now, basically, Ann Schneider seems to be taking a lead in whole conversation. Susan Shay seems to be sitting in the background somewhere. So by my, as we're maybe, uh, trying to ventures in the future, whatever you wanna call it. And that's what we hope to discuss in the future when, uh, Ann Schneider comes out. That'll be the first person we speak to. The strategic planning process, uh, proper report about, you had your surveys in on time? Glad you guys did.
There's one missing.
Yeah, there's one missing.
Who's this then?
I am number five.
I thought it said they're all in.
No, they're not.
No, we got a email. I thought it was a email. We know who it is.
I just know who the culprit is.
Anyways, self-explanatory. Uh, the terms of the planning and zoning members, which is in our packet for review or free review. And I'd like to have someone make a motion for Paul Holman. The term would expire May first of twenty fourteen. Uh, Thea McTeemus, the term would expire May first of twenty fourteen. Lance Sauer, the term expires May first of twenty fifteen. Phil Service, the term expires May first of twenty fifteen. George Scudama, May first of twenty fifteen. Dennis Taginars, May first of twenty sixteen. And Kevin Ducher, May first of twenty sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
There was a motion made, a second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I am number six and seven are sort of related in a way, in a roundabout way. Uh, actually, six, seven and eight, which are basically, uh, a long time ago, I thought that we should have, Veteran Day is a legal holiday, and I'm asking that we approve that tonight for all the employees. Second motion made, and there was a second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, along with that, um, in a meeting that I had with Public Works employees, and I'll actually combine seven and eight. Bottom line is, when I took office, I started meeting with staff, office staff was first, department heads. And I met with Public Works employees, and I've been one of you new contractors assigned with the police department, I'll sit down with them as well. But in one of the meetings with the Public Works employees, they pointed out to me that, um, you can bank up to thirty days of sick day. Once you max out with your sick days, you can cash them in, but you only get half of them back. Which to me, basically promotes a person from taking their sick days, or you're penalizing a person for not calling it sick. So basically, I'd asked that if it would be possible that we could change that. And basically, after you max out, that you're allowed to cash in all your sick days, which is total of five per year, if you don't use them. Anybody like to make that motion or this question?
So moved.
So motion on the floor.
Second.
And there's a second, any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Just to further inform you, some of the discussion they had with the employees, uh, healthcare coverage, to be honest with you, they, they have wind of what could possibly be coming with the police department down the road, which, uh, basically started a discussion about their health, healthcare coverage, not so much the plan itself, but the basically cost of healthcare, uh, overtime rate during, overtime pay rate during the holiday call-out, uh, banking of comp time, which we talked about with Buddy, which basically, if you have a small staff, comp time can be very detrimental to the, uh, to the working function of the department, um, and so on and so forth. Basically, the things that we brought up to you tonight were the two things of, of something that we could do about at this particular point in time. And which we'd passion that.
Is there a maximum comp time that's a lot, right?
Yeah, the police department, um.
A lot's union, we can't talk about that, I'm looking at Public Works, forty.
Forty.
Forty-eight. And does it need to be used inside the time it's been?
Within a year, yes.
In the year, but not in the paper?
No.
Do you pay them time and a half for approved comp time?
Do I, yes.
We pay them time and a half for return.
If it's on, books is an hour and a half, it gets paid out in screen. So if you work an hour of overtime, you get an hour, then you want to discomp, you get an hour and a half to bank. Then if you wanna cash out, you get a dollar per hour. That way you camped up. Is that correct, Buddy?
Yes, sir.
And the cap is what? Cap is forty or forty-eight?
Forty-eight, forty-one.
But you gotta be at zero on April thirtieth, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're only allowed to hit forty-eight, you can't hit forty-eight, drop down to forty, and go back to forty-eight again. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the way it is now. And they're saying they have an issue with that, they should be allowed to keep it at forty-eight. We have to, we haven't really discussed that yet from our management, or, or is that new to staff? Because there's a lot of time.
Staff is a nightmare.
There's a lot of.
You don't have, you don't have the big crew to be playing with comp time on.
That's one of the things that was brought up that we discussed, we discussed it a little bit with Buddy, but we haven't said, don't take any action after that at all. And like you said, that the comp time is great, uh, the trouble is that you're never gonna have anybody working. Everybody young continues to do that, and that's why Buddy is concerned about it. That's it, I would like to request a closed session to discuss land acquisition and to discuss personnel. Okay, personnel, basically, we'd like to talk about, uh, code enforcement officer. We also talk, like to talk about a employee. Is there a motion on the floor?
Oh, motion. Second.